So we'll go ahead and get started and we'll start with the word of prayer and we'll turn it over to Rob and let him take it from there. Please join us as we go to our Martin prayer. Gracious God, thank you for this day. Thank you for this time that we can gather together and discuss your word or or just open our hearts and our minds to the message that Rob has to bring to us through his book, The Night Lord. Thank you for all the many blessings in life. We ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, I'll fix that. Turn it over, Rob. I bought, and by the way, I'm going to leave everybody unmuted since we don't have near as many people. So we'll just continue to go along similar like we do in Sunday School. So anybody that has anything to say, you know, this Zoom participants, if down and out, we'll hear you. And just, I see a lot of you have already muted yourself. That's fine. This is a reminder that just hit the space bar on your computer and that will unmute you. Okay, here's Rob.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Good to see everybody here. Everybody on, everybody in the room, breaks in, everybody. The weather has changed and we have now daylight savings time. So by the time we get done tonight, we'll, it will not be dark. That'll be great. It'll still be light outside. So somebody in the room said that they really liked daylight savings time. They just wish it was all the time. Yes, like what they do is the government is like an Indian giver. They give, they give you the hour in the fall and then they take it back in the spring. You think we learned by now that they're going to do that all the time? It's kind of like taxes too, by the way, social security, but they give it to you. They give you that hour and then in the fall they say, or in the spring they say, no, we'll take it back. So we lose that hour. Tonight, we're going to talk about a really interesting subject, one that I really enjoy. It was really interesting though, several days ago, I was reading our devotional that we do and it's called the Daily, Our Daily Bread. We've been doing this for, oh, how long, boy, then? Probably, I don't know, probably at least 20 years, I suppose. And that's one of the devotions that we read. And it was really interesting because they touched on this subject. And I was really fascinated. It was from Psalm 73. And the devotion is by Bill Crowder, one of the writers and contributors to that magazine. He said, "In his book Fearfully and Wonderfully Made, co-authored with Philip Yancey, Dr. Paul Brand observed this. A hummingbird's heart weighs a fraction of an ounce and beats 800 times a minute." Can you believe that? A fraction of an ounce and it beats 800 times a minute. A blue whale's heart weighs half a ton, which is 1,000 pounds, beats only 10 times per minute and can be heard two miles away. Woo, I don't know by who, but my hearing isn't that good, but somebody obviously checked it out. In contrast, here of those, the human heart seems dully functional, yet it does its job beating 100,000 times a day. We're going to talk about that. 65 to 70 times a minute with no time off for rest to get most of us through 70 years or a little bit more. So the heart is very, very significant, very important. And that's one of the things that we're going to talk about tonight is the heart. Long ago, philosophers in the ancient Greek world debated whether the, the, the most important organ of the body was the mind or the heart. And in the book, I talk about how really, you know, the mind is involved in more science, math, the, the, uh, the, the medical industry, even Billy, probably the attorneys, the lawyers. In order to be successful in life, you have to be good at one of the science subjects. And not so importantly, maybe the English subjects. When I went to college, I asked my dad what I should major in and he said business marketing. And he figured that would be productive and I'd probably make some money on it. It was probably considered a science because it had a career. It had, you know, there was going to be a good career from that. But when I got into college, I began to really enjoy English literature. And so I wrote a poem on campus and it was a contest that was about a painting about a spider in the web. And I wrote, and they said, anybody in campus who wants to write a poem about it can't. So I wrote this poem. And out of the 200 contestants, most of whom were English majors, I won the poetry contest. And after that, I really thought, man, it'd be really great to major in English. And then I went to the professor and said, you know, what can I do with an English degree? And he said, not much. There's not a lot of professional poets. I never see advertisements in the, in the newspapers or on, on, you know, the, the career websites about, you know, professional poets. So I just stuck with, with the marketing. Really, if you think about, I mean, I don't know how many of you went to college, but those of you that went to college probably had careers majoring in things that were sort of science related rather than English related. And so, I don't know. But from the very beginning of time, there has been an argument, philosophical discussion about whether the mind is more important, the brain, or the heart. And some feel that the brain is more important because, you know, after you die, they say that you are all brain dead. And so once the brain ceases to function, there is, you know, there's no more life in the body. Some people are brain dead before they even die, but that's somebody else. But the problem with that particular philosophy is that Bible seems to be different than that. The Bible seems to look at the, the brain, the mind as being important and significant. And we'll talk about that later, but the real center of men seems to be the heart. And so what is the heart? I mean, we talked about, you know, watching Hallmark movies and our heart is moved or something like that. That's kind of emotional part, romantic part. But the Bible has kind of a different connotation of what the heart is, and then we'll look at that a little bit too. Any thoughts or questions on that? It's very, it's very interesting and fascinating to study that subject. Because this debate has been going on since early times.
You know, without the heart, we couldn't pump up the blood to the body. So
That's right.
It would die, but then can the brains continue to
Yes. She says that the heart is very important because it pumps blood to the rest of the body. While the brain is able, capable of functioning. I guess if you had a choice between whether your heart would go or your brain would go, I don't know, pretty hard choice. I think sometimes, and we don't have a doctor in the What's that? Especially if you're a politician. That's right. The first thing that, four, four things we're going to talk about tonight. First is human problem. And we know that the human problem is what? What is our human problem as human beings? Sin, right? Sin is the major human problem we have. And so we have different, different levels of trying to solve the problem of sin. And on page, page 54, in the second paragraph down, that is that we are, the human problem of sin has been solved by the fields of education, economics, sociology, or science. And that leads us to one of the most important of the Beatitudes, the purity of the heart. How, how do these areas help us to live, but don't solve the problem? Let's take, for example, education. How does education help us, but it really doesn't solve the human problem? Any teachers here?
Education's supposed to make you smarter, so
Okay, because we are smarter now than we were, you know, 50, 100, 500 years ago. Education has helped us to have more knowledge about things. Books and books are written, knowledge helps us to live better. I mean, it advances who we are as individuals.
Technology.
I mean, technology. Mark says technology.
Advances with technology has been phenomenal, but it seems like it's created more problems in certain circumstances as well.
Yes, Mark said that technology has helped us advance, but it also creates different problems. Zoom is a great technology. It's something that science has invented and, and come up with. I mean, you know, you think about it, it wasn't that long ago that we were listening to eight tracks on the, in our, in our machines and nobody has an eight track anymore. You know, and so there's all sorts of advances in, in so many areas of, of technology that are incredible. I mean, I think we've advanced more in the last 20 years than we, than we did in the last 50 before that. Technology is helpful. Very, very helpful, I think. But it also doesn't solve our problem. It doesn't seem to solve sin problem because, you know, I hate to say it, that some grandkids, some of our grandkids sit there with their phones like this, playing their games all day long. And I don't know what's that, that may be helping their minds stay active, but it doesn't do much for their, their personal inward problem. It doesn't solve that problem. Technology is a wonderful thing, but it doesn't solve our problem. Education is a wonderful thing, but it still doesn't solve our problem. Ecology is a wonderful thing, you know, getting, you know, greener, you know, getting rid of pollution. You know, reusing materials, cars that run more efficiently instead of these gas bombs that we used to have, you know, in the old days where the cars were about, you know, 25 feet long and about 20 feet wide and it blew gas out like it Yeah, I remember, you know, when I was, when my, I, I had, my, my grandfather worked for the steel company in Pittsburgh, U.S. Steel. And that was probably back in the 1920s, I would suppose sometime around then. And then my father went to Pittsburgh and he worked in the steel mills also, and probably in the 1940s. And then I went to Pittsburgh and went to seminary there and worked there for a while. And now, now our son is living in Pittsburgh and that was in the 1970s and this is now in the 2000s. You'd see pictures of Pittsburgh back in the 1920s and it's like, you know, they had the lights on in the middle of the day because there was so much pollution there. I mean, it was like coal city. Iron, steel mills, I mean, they just rashed out all the pollution all over the place. I remember growing up even in, in the back of our house, we lived about 10 to 15 miles away from the steel mills. But the back of our house would turn dusty gray from all the steel that we had to have it cleaned every year because the, the pollution was so bad. Now you go to Pittsburgh where our son lives now, and it's as clear as a bell. It's as clear as picking you. I mean, it's unbelievable. There's actually a blue sky above Pittsburgh. People didn't know there was a sun up there. So What's that saying? No, okay. So ecology helps us, you know, it really does environmentally. I don't know what's happened to the, to the, the bins that we're putting out. I saw something on, or actually Joyland saw something on Facebook about the recycle bins. You know, we were putting things faithfully in the recycle bin every Tuesday night. And I would take it out and then, and then all of a sudden it's, they stopped picking it up. I don't know if it was during the pandemic. I think it was. And I kept it out there and, you know, finally the guy, man on Thursday would come by with his trash truck and just throw it in the trash. And I understand that's what's going on. I'm not sure if they're picking up recyclables anymore. They are? Some, don't think they are?
They are.
They are picking it up? Okay. Okay, some people are obviously, I don't know, they only do it on Wednesday. Is that right? I think so. Yeah. And I mean, that's a great thing. You know, I think it's important to recycle and it helps our environment too, because some of the paper we use is made out of products that have already been used. I think that's really important. But it still doesn't solve the human problem, does it? Still doesn't solve the human problem. You know, we still have that issue. And we won't get into politics and say that politics is beneficial. I don't even want to even need to go into that.
Rob?
Yes.
Rob, just Billy, don't you think that technology and education sometimes creates more opportunities for sin? For example, I mean pornography with the technology and people who are well educated become stockbrokers. I mean, those almost create more opportunities for sin, Rob.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's a very good point. I mean, you know, and that way ahead of ourselves. But I think that's a really good point. Another area is medicine. And we'll look at the heart tonight. We've looked at it a little bit. And medicine is so hard bass now. I mean, look how quickly we got this vaccine for COVID. It's incredible. I mean, you know, they, they had that ramp up technology to be able to get us the vaccine quickly. They can do so many things. I remember years and years ago when people were going for heart surgery and they'd have to rest and, you know, it would take hours and hours and hours and, you know, and then they'd have to lay in bed for about three weeks and they couldn't do anything. And now, I mean, you know, people are out of bed in about a week and they're just walking around doing everything. And the same way with having a baby, you know, technology has advanced so much. When I had hernia surgery, they, the first time they cut me open. And then the second time I got one on the other side. And that time they did laparoscopic surgery with just a tiny little pinpoint. And then they stuck this thing to blow up my abdomen. And then they went in and, and did something with the new sutures or something. They did something inside there. I was not awake, thank goodness. But, but the only, and this goes back to what Billy said, for about three weeks after that, I guess in my stomach, I felt like I was a helium balloon. I was ready to blow. There's a little bit of downside to that technology in medicine, but, you know, again, medicine is not going to live forever. You know, I know Joyland's dad used to say Joyland, what did your dad used to say? He said, he said something about living? Yeah, his, her dad used to say that he'll live as long as they keep finding parts to put in him. And I guess that's true to that. So really they help us, don't they? And we shouldn't be anti help. Otherwise we'd be all these people still, you know, without electricity. I mean, no running water. I mean, you know, we, I mean, we live now in a day where we have so many advantages that our parents and our grandparents did not have. And we need to thank, thank God for that. But we, but, but it may drive us away from taking the, the real, the real problem away from us. You know, that the problem, you know, is not dealt with. And that is the heart. The final thing is religion, and I don't want to say too much about that, but somebody had any thoughts about religion being kind of a, you know, a way that man tries to solve our problem. By religion, what do I mean? Okay. Yes, that's exactly right. Yeah. You know, we can, we can be away from people. Is that right? Angels. So in other words, you know, because of technology, you can study the Bible on the internet or you can listen to the sermon on the internet. And that gets away from the human interaction of what it's, we're supposed to be as a body of Christ, as the church. And that's, that takes away from that. So religion also can be found in liturgies, religious ceremonies without any meaning to them. Doing things just because that's what you're supposed to do. You know, not feeling real enlightened by what you do. You know, last night I think Eloise spoke about, you know, just going through the motions of, of religion rather than the heart. And Jesus was really pretty much upset with the Pharisees and the Sadducees and then Johnny says they're ill. And all those other characters that were real religious, but they didn't get really the heart of the matter. And I think we can be that way too. I think we can go through the motions without really getting to the heart of the issue.
It seems like even today, one of our biggest challenges, I think you mentioned in the, in the book, is the number of different denominations that, you know, that are out there and the fact that we spend more time discussing differences rather than what we have in common.
Yes. I don't know if you've heard what he said, but he said that there are, one of the things in the book was the 41,000 denominations in the world. And we spend more time, he said, on the differences rather than what we agree on. And unfortunately, you know, we can find that even in Pearl River County. Right in Pearl River County. I remember Alan Hickman, the pastor at Resurrection Life Church saying that, you know, there was, you couldn't swing a dead cat without hitting a Baptist church in town. We had about one Presbyterian church, about three Methodist churches. We have an Episcopal church. We had a Catholic church. And we had 38 Baptist churches when I was here in the 90s. So they're all over the place. And I don't know what they don't like about each other or what they disagree with. Maybe they're just trying to big, build a bigger cathedral maybe. I don't know what it is, but that's very true. So, so really the failure of, of the world's systems to help us live, but also fail to solve the human problem. And then we move into the fact that on page 56 about God's way to solve the human problem. And that is the way of the heart. And I say, the only way on page 56, under the pure of the heart, the only way to change life, to change society, to make a person happy is by the change of heart. And that's something that we really can't do. You know? We can't do it for other people. We can't do it for our husband or wife. We can't do it for our children. And God knows we can't do it for our grandchildren. You can't just reach your hand in there and, you know, and draw a switch or, you know, transform their heart into something right. Only God can do that by His grace can do that. That doesn't mean that we give up on doing anything, but it means that only God can do that. So we want to talk a little bit about the heart. And on page 56, what is the heart? We know what the physical part is, but what about the spiritual heart? Is it the, is, is it the intellect? Is it the ability to think? No, no, it really can't be because the mind is what thinks. The heart can think and the scripture speaks of that, but it isn't purely the intellect. You know, what we think. It isn't in our mind only. Is the heart the will, strength of heart, courage, be able to fight in battle? I don't think so. I think the will, I think it involves the will, but it's not the will itself. The will is the determination to, to press on when things are difficult. There's a huge difference between a strong willed child and, and, and one who's compliant. And a strong willed child has probably more chances of success in life because they're hard headed. But they also have chances of falling apart too.
What causes me to sin? My heart or my mind?
Okay. What causes, we'll use that in a personal sense. What causes Billy to sin? Is Beverly there?
Yes, she is.
You're not going to say Beverly, right? What is it that causes us to sin? Is it our heart or, I mean, our mind?
I think it's your mind. I mean, that, that all goes back to free will and the fact that God gave us the ability to think, which is a double edged sword.
Okay.
It can either be progressive or it can be regressive.
Okay, Mark says it's the mind. The mind is what makes us sin.
I don't mind.
Okay. You know what? I, I, I think that's right. Because in the very beginning, God created two trees in the garden. Remember? The tree of life and the tree of what? Knowledge. I won't go on to say the rest, but you know, that was the mind. The tree of life was the heart. And that's why I believe that those philosophers who say the mind or the brain is the real center of men, of men and women is incorrect because the mind is what gets in trouble. It's the heart that does not. So I, you know, what do you think about that, Billy? You think that's right? Would you agree?
I, yeah, I agree with that. I mean, I think the, the mind makes the decision to sin and the heart maybe can convince us not to.
Yes, absolutely. I think that the conscience speaks to the heart so that the heart says, you know, I don't think your mind is operating right on a bright frequency here. You know, you're thinking things that are not supposed to be thought of. In the Sermon on the Mount that we're in, in this Beatitudes, Jesus goes into greater detail about what we think and about how it's just as bad to think bad thoughts as it is to do them. And, you know, the Pharisees were great because the Pharisees and the Sadducees and Joanna and Johnny, they're, oh, always thought that, you know, it was all physical. It was always external. They went around with, they focused on the externals, you know, what you do, what you don't do. But Jesus was pointing out that it was inside, the eternal thoughts that you're thinking that are wrong. So for example, we'll think about murder and saying anger provoked by the mind that said, I don't like that person. I'm going to hurt that. That's just as bad as it is going out and hurting them. So, you know, I think that you have that, that in the Sermon on the Mount as well. So I, I think that's right. And, and the heart is not emotion, is it? I mean, you know, when we watch Hallmark movies, you know, we say, you know, you know, he broke her heart or something like that, or, you know. It's another part of your brain. Yeah, your emotions is, you know, and I don't know enough about the brain to know that, but I know there's different parts of it. And some of them function for me well and others don't do very well. Some men, some, I mean, some of us maybe don't like Hallmark movies too much. And some of us have that brain that they love those Hallmark movies. And so your emotions, and some people cry and other people hardly ever cry. Have you noticed that? Some people get angry real quickly and other people do not. It's really, maybe writing is all that, that is a part of your mind. There's different parts of your mind. And I'm, again, I'm not a, I'm, I'm not an expert in the brain, but you know, that is, that is very important.
The older you get, the more you cry.
The older you get, the more you cry. And I think the older we get, the more emotional they get too. I, I really believe that, you know, they start to be, you know, become a little bit more, what wasn't it? Left brain? Left brain was the Yeah, the left brain, you know, men, I think, begin to adjust a little bit to that, that sense of emotion more. Because I know there, there has been a time or two when I've actually tried a Hallmark movie, so. That's okay. But again, you know, can we, can we live based on our emotions? Oh my gosh, no. Can you imagine living on your emotions? Oh gee. I can't imagine being married to someone who lived on their emotions. That would be a really hard experience. So the motions is not the part either. The heart is basically the central focus and function of human beings. And the way we, we look at that is by the physical part. Do we have any nurses or anybody in the medical field in the room or on Zoom? No? Oh, yeah, you know, Cherry, Cherry, Cherry is. Now Cherry will probably be able to tell you a lot more than I will, but I know that there are four parts to the heart. There's the atrium, left and, and ventricle, left, right, left, right. And these things, that, that, that heart is amazing to me. When I, I've read about it and studied it a little bit. I'm amazed how quickly the heart changes and functions. And it does it all the time. It's doing it right now. And it circulates the, the, it circulates all the blood through your body in one minute. And it, and, and the purpose of it is to take the impurities out of, out of the, which is mainly carbon dioxide. Take them out of the, out of your parts of your body, bring it back into the heart and push it into the lungs and then your lungs push it out into the air. And then you breathe in and it takes that, that oxygen in, takes it to the heart and pumps it into your, your body through all the artery or through the arteries. And is, is it, here is the arteries that go to the parts of the body. It's not, yeah, it is. And the veins bring it back, right? What? Yes, okay. So I think I'm doing, and, and inside your heart, there's like a flat door. Those are called valves. And immediately like the door opens and it goes, then it comes, closes down and you go, it's kind of like your fist, like this, you know? And you think about how amazing the heart is. I mean, I just, I can't believe. And if, and if it fails to, and if it fails to pump that blood into the heart of the body, your finger or your leg or your toe, well, I guess it falls asleep. But, you know, it fails to function. So just think how hard, and it works, it does that for 70 years. I can't, I, that just blows my mind. You know, it almost makes me sad I didn't major in science. And so if that is what it does, the, the physical heart does, what does that say about the spiritual heart? Maybe God made it so that that would parallel the physical heart. So how does the heart purify itself? How do we cooperate to solve the human problem? If our hearts are changed, then who changes the heart? God. And only God can change the heart. We can't do it for other people and we can't do it to ourselves. But everyone who's sitting there, sitting here tonight. But everyone who's sitting there, sitting here tonight, and everyone on Zoom has had a heart change, a heart transplant. And you now have a new heart, and, uh, that happened by the grace of God. I'm sure that there were things that helped for that to take place, whether you were raised in the church, whether someone taught you, someone presented the gospel to you. Um, I know for me, I heard the message, and it wakened my heart. My heart was changed immediately. It didn't take a long time. And I know the moment that that happened. I was religious, sort of. I fell away like a prodigal son, but then God just changed my heart in immediate instant. And now I'm live out the process of cooperating with that new heart I have to live out my life and to, to change my life, to make it more like God. Um, how do we do that? Based on the premise that the spiritual heart is like the physical heart? How would you say we do that? Exercising your faith every day, living out your faith, serving other people, coming to backpack ministry, you know, exhibiting it, maybe, uh, speaking words of wisdom to other people that need to hear it? Eloise, are you there?
I am.
She's there. Yeah, tell us what happened the other day when somebody came to your house.
The FedEx man came and he was telling us how hard it was to, do, do what he's doing because they've had so many that are out with, with the virus and it's put a strain on them. And he had talked about the Lord a couple, just had mentioned a couple of things. So before he left, I asked him, could I pray with him? And he said, but first I said, can, I will pray for you. And he said, that'll be, that'll be good. I would appreciate any prayers. I said, can I pray with you now? And he said, sure. So I prayed with him and he thanked me a couple of times as he was walking away, because he had had a bad experience at one of the companies here in town, because he tried to deliver something and he had on a mask and they told him not to come in. Why are you wearing that mask? Don't come in here. And so he couldn't deliver the product to them.
And it, it, it was a, just a political thing because he had been there before. They knew him well. So.
So you, you prayed, you prayed for him, right, Eloise?
I did.
And he thanked, see, now that, that's, I, I, I thought of that because that's one way that we, uh, we purify our heart is by doing things like that for other people. Um, living out our life in faith. Um, you know, doing good things, bearing fruit of the spirit, uh, loving people, uh, having joy in our life instead of being in, in, depressed. Um, uh, you know, self-control of our, of our mind emotions, you know, you know, our temptations that we have, the ability to, 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 you know, live, live the way God really wants us to. That's kind of the way we purify. I guess, Mark, we would say sanctifying grace. Yeah. Sanctifying grace is the process that we continue to, to, to take out the impurities of our life and put in the purity. The, the, the bad things are taken out and the good things are put forward. You know, uh, for example, in Galatians chapter five, Paul talks about the works of the flesh are opposed to the fruit of the spirit. The flesh and the spirit are opposed to one another. And so we, uh, we loosen our grip on the works of the flesh and we begin to practice more the fruit of the spirit. And that's what we call sanctification, the grace of sanctification. And that is what the heart does, the spiritual heart.
But, uh, I mean, when we're talking about purifying our heart, I mean, the first step is, could the first step always need to be or include asking for forgiveness and sins? That, you know, we can do all these great things, but if we're not recognizing and trying to atone for our sins and asking for forgiveness and having that washed away.
Yes, yes, it's true that, you know, it begins really with a confession of our sins on a daily basis. You know, to be able to recognize, you know, I said something wrong, uh, maybe atone for it ourselves. Uh, I, maybe I said something wrong to Joyland, we'll say, because I'm with her pretty frequently. And I'm sure that that happens, uh, I won't say frequently, but I hope not too frequently. But, you know, uh, to be able to say to God, you know, God, I'm really sorry that I said that. I should not. That was the wrong thing to say. Maybe I was short with her. Yeah, I, I, um, well, another thing probably is I ignored what she said because I get accused of that occasionally. I hear what she said. I just don't understand. No, I won't go into that, but I'm sure none of you met.
Rob, I, I, I read something and it said that we can't attain, uh, that pure heart by ourselves. Uh, we can't have the heart that's morally pure and fully developed by God. It's impossible for us to do, and it's only possible through God.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, and, and what's really interesting, and this is one of the things that I learned theologically, is that, is that, uh, to, to put it in simple terms, that God in His grace is the only one that can change our heart. We cannot change Him. But once it's changed, which is called spirit cooperatus, which means that we cooperate with the spirit that lives in our heart to purify ourselves, so that we are actually, we actually become more involved in the process itself of sanctification than we are in justifying grace. Justifying grace is that which, in which God comes to us and somehow, some way miraculously, a miracle, we become Christians, you know, we become saints. And yet we have that process, which, as Billy said, we cooperate with, with the Holy Spirit, with God, to get rid of the sin and take on more and more of Christ's light, so we become more like Him. I think that's pretty Wesleyan, isn't it?
Very Wesleyan.
Okay, that's Wesleyan. Mark said that's Wesleyan, so I, I just, good. So we, you know, uh, purify our hearts. We become pure by releasing ourselves from the bad things and taking on the good things. And that takes a long time, doesn't it? I mean, you can't expect a newborn Christian to act like a mature Christian. There is no way, you know?
It's hard work too. It's not an easy thing to do. It's not like you can say, oh, fail and live like Christ. Sometimes it's a war within you as to which thing you're gonna do. You know, as you go through the purifying.
Joyland says it's hard work, that it takes a lot of work for that. It takes a long time to, to do it. You know, you just can't say abracadabra and all of a sudden that happens, right, Joyland? What else? Did you say something else at the end there?
It's not a war within you.
A war, yeah, spiritual warfare.
Fight to change, make the spirit stronger than.
A warfare to make the spirit stronger and the flesh weaker. And, um, and sometimes it takes a long time. Uh, for example, I know even in my own life, and I'm not gonna get too detailed here, but I know certain things that I've had struggles with, uh, which I have a tendency to do, uh, or had a tendency to do, I hope, or, or think, or say. And I have a weakness in that area, or in several areas. It's not just one, there's several. And sometimes it's taken me years to be able to be victorious over that and conquer that. And, and it takes a lot of warfare and practice, and it takes a lot of confession. I have to go back and confess and I did that wrong. You know, I did it wrong again. I did it wrong again. And sometimes I even, to be totally honest with you, I have been totally frustrated by my inability to conquer that weakness that I have. And, um, thank God I think I have. I don't recognize that I don't do that anymore. And so, so it takes a lot of hard work. It takes a real battle. And that's because if it was God doing it, it would be a piece of cake. But unfortunately, we're, we're involved with God trying to do it. And so that's a, that's a real hardship, really is. Any other thoughts on that? Um, go ahead, somebody? Okay, Carol. Uh, tonight I have, um, Bible verses which have the heart in them, and I believe that there's over, I think, six hundred and ninety-five Bible verses with the word heart in Old Testament and New Testament. But I picked some of them, and I'm going to hand them out at the end. And then I'll probably, if it's okay with Mark, leave them here. And anybody that maybe wants to come in the fellowship hall or come to church or come to Sunday School, they can pick up their, their heart items because, I mean, we could talk, I, you know, for a long time about each one of these verses. But I'm just gonna read some of them to you and, uh, and just go through them. It begins with Psalm twenty-four, uh, which says, "Who may ascend the mountain of the Lord? Who may stand in this holy place? The one who has clean hands and a pure heart, who does not trust in an idol or swear by a false god." At Psalm twenty-four, three, four. I like that because it says pure heart, who can stand them, who can ascend the mountain of the Lord. In other words, who can, who can come to heaven, who can be accepted by Him, and that is those of us who are purifying their hearts. And then Psalm fifty-one, ten says, "Create in me a pure heart, O God, and renew a steadfast spirit within me." So we're asking God to create that pure heart to help me, help me to, as Joyland says, to fight that spiritual battle. Psalm fifty-three, one says, "The fool says in his heart," what does he say? Anybody know? "There is no God." That's a, that's the negative side of that. And then in Psalm seventy-three, one, "Surely God is good to Israel, to those who are pure in heart." And we're gonna talk about that a little bit more in the final sections here about, about what do we do now? Uh, how, what, how do we see God? And matter of fact, I'll leave you to start on that a little bit because, um, how can we live out this purity that we have? How can we see God? What do you see God in? What, where, what areas of life do you see God? Anybody have any?
I see God in my backyard, in the fauna and the floor of any back.
I do too.
Hey, man, Jean.
You can hear that. Okay, Jean said she sees it in her backyard and the floor is fauna, and it's beautiful. I mean, I do too, you know, jeez. The Azaleas have just started coming out the last few days. Just beautiful. I mean, unbelievable.
They need to go to a circus when they've got a backyard full of squirrels.
She said, they need to go to a circus when they have a backyard full of squirrels. I think ama, uh, animals are pretty amazing. Um, I think that, uh, some of us who have dogs, hmm, how many have dogs? Yeah, there's about three in the room. How about on Zoom? Do people in Zoom have dogs? Animal lovers? Anybody have a cat? Oh, we've got cats. We got two people in the room that like cats. Now, if, if David and, unfortunately, David and Patty are not here. They have dogs, they have cats, they have chickens, and they have, uh, they have a turtle that swims in a, in something, and it's, there might be a bird. They have a bird. Yeah. Some people, anybody have a bird at home? Not on Zoom because I probably hear the birds singing. Yeah. Our, our, uh, our granddaughter and grandson, our son and daughter-in-law have birds. They like birds. I find birds to be very fascinating, and I like them too. Um, matter of fact, I have a bird feeder in my backyard, and I go out every morning to feed the gophers. I think about, I told someone, I think half the gophers and pigeons are in my backyard because there's so many and they're waiting for me, and they're all in trees, and they wait for me to come out. And just the other day, I went out and I hold my, uh, feeders. I bring them in at night because the raccoons will get to them, and they, and I, I saw them one night, you know, about four o'clock in the morning, they were tearing up the bird feed. So I, I carried them out every morning, and the other day I was carrying them out, and, um, and all this bird came, this, one of the gophers was right around my head, and then went up and then came right back and landed. I mean, I'm talking about, about one foot. I could have put out my finger to see if he jumped on there, and he's looking at me like this, and, and it was only about a foot away. So I find it in the birds. They're extraordinary to me. But we see it in animals. Where else do we see God?
Hopefully in other people.
In other people, we see God in other people. When we see people that are, uh, living for God, when we see people acting for God, when we see people doing things for God, I think we see them. We see God in that, and that's a, a pleasure to find that.
In miracles that He performs.
Miracles that He performs, yes. For example, uh, you know, we see a lot of miracles in the Bible. And that's why Jesus, I think, uh, made the blind people see. He did that over and over again. He was always making people see. And, 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 and that was a miracle. It was a miracle that blind people could actually see. That's amazing.
But that, that's the same miracle for all believers.
If, yeah, Mark says it's the same miracle for all believers. All believers now are able to see. We see more clearly as we go along, and that, that's really the final point that we want to make is, is that the more that we purify our lives by getting out the bad and bringing on the new, the more clearly we see God in our life. And He becomes more prominent. The sharper our vision becomes. We begin to have new and sharper visions for what God wants, first of all, for ourselves, then for others, and then for our church. And that's really kind of the way I really want to bring this to a close, because I really want to close in on, not just us individually, but on the church itself. But let's talk about having a fresh vision for ourselves. Um, you know, we go through Lent, and fortunately tonight, Mark didn't say anything about fasting, because I've never seen a church, I've never been in a church that talks about fasting so much. But in Lent, we, 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 we get, we, we start losing some of the things, uh, that we cling to for that period of time, so we can have a new vision for God, you know, a new appreciation of God. Billy, were you gonna say something?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking today about our jobs.
Oh, that's okay. So we, we, we're able to see God more clearly now. Um, I have to say that the more, the longer I become a Christian, the more refined my vision is about right and wrong. I have to say, I'm, I mean, it's obvious because think about it. You know, the more you, you, you get rid of sin, all of a sudden a new one pops up, and you never saw that before. You know, you get rid of the, the big sins, you know, the really bad things, and then all of a sudden these little things start creeping in, and you begin to say, wow, not only do I sin in that particular area, but I sin even thinking bad things about that person. Here I am, thinking bad things about that person, you know? Oh, I wish they, I, I wish that guy who passed me at eighty miles an hour on the right on the berm, I hope he gets in an accident, runs into a telephone pole down there. Okay, so, you know, these little things that before were very acceptable, I mean, I would think it's very acceptable for him to get in an accident, now become something that is more difficult to deal with. So we see more clearly, our vision becomes sharper. You know, it's kind of like when we go to the, the doctor, eye doctor, and he puts those things in there, and all of a sudden, that's perfect. I can see real well now. I just need to carry that machine around. I think our vision of others becomes more focused too. Um, Mark has already said we can see God in other people. We can see when someone is really, really, uh, you know, uh, doing things for the Lord. Uh, we can see, go ahead, Joyland.
You need to spend quiet time with it too, so that it can be, bridge and rejuvenate and learn and help us to see those things more.
Spend time with God to see more clearly. Yeah, I think there's some pretty good hymns about that, you know? Um, having a, a newer vision for God and being able to see Him more, uh, clearly and having a quiet time, and I think that's really significant. What other ways do you sometimes see God in other people? And maybe not even in Christian. Do you see God in a baby?
Oh, yes. Miraculous little creatures.
Mm-hmm. The, the, the miracle of a baby is just astounding, isn't it? So innocent, at least most of them. Um, you know, pure, unadulterated, not have all the world things that have come upon them. I think that's why we love babies so much, is we see God in that. I mean, you know, God is so present in so many ways in other people and, 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 you know, we, 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 we deepen our appreciation of that when we see it, when we see God work in our lives, when we see how God operates. Really, really significant. Creates a better, sharper vision for us. Well, let's talk, and, go ahead, somebody else? Let's talk finally about a vi- vision for our church. And, um, I was thinking about this because, you know, um, uh, as we go through Lent, we get onto the Easter season, and we see so many things changing with COVID. Uh, we've been in, you know, indoors for so long. We don't do things we used to do. Uh, a lot of things have changed. Uh, we start coming back with, you know, as a church, but we don't function maybe the same way. Uh, we have prayer meetings that are on Zoom, uh, Sunday School lessons on Zoom, youth meetings on Zoom. Uh, we do things differently. We, there's so many activities that are starting to come back, that have not come back. Do you think that maybe God is telling us something? And if so, what do He be telling us? Hmm, any thoughts?
I think He's like, He's telling us that we're taking our fellow I am for granted and we should be reaching out to them instead of.
So the fellowship we have with other human beings, the spiritual fellowship we have with other Christians, which have, we we've taken for granted and now we're seeing a new vision for that. That's a fresh vision of being able to cooperate with other Christians and work and life and things of that nature.
About more quiet time.
Yeah, well, that has been enhanced.
Meditate.
Yes, be able to, as Joyland said, is to have that quiet time, that silent time to be able to 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 think about that.
Yes, that was intense.
Do you think that maybe um God might have sent the COVID so that the churches would have fresh vision for their future, uh, for um laying out a plan? Um, laying out a, uh, you know, a uh, a a a new thing, to do a new thing. Not just be satisfied with the way the old things are run. Maybe God was kind of jerking us a little bit and saying, okay, time to wake up. You've been, you've been running on the same platform for a long time. Maybe God is calling for some sort of revival or revitalization or a sense of renewal in our lives. Um, you know, I don't know. I I I kind of see that.
I I think it goes back to, you know, the concept of why does God allow bad things to happen to good people? Is is God didn't allow bad things to happen, say, you know, like the COVID or whatever. I'm not sure that, I think God calls COVID, but I think God can use COVID.
Can use it.
To do what you're talking about is churches that are stagnant, that are not growing. This is an opportunity to reach out in different ways.
It is, it is. It's it's an opportunity really for us to be able to to change maybe our our priorities. Uh, make uh some things more important than they were and um and and go in that direction. When we were at New Horizons, um, every year we would have a fresh vision for the church and the leaders would get together. And they would uh uh think of a a a vision of something that want wanted to, they wanted to accomplish. A a list of things. Sometimes it would be three, sometimes five. And we would list those things of what we want to see new in the church this year. Um, we would reflect on the past and say, well, those things aren't working. Let's get away from that. Let's look at what we can do new this year that'll make a difference in people's lives and also attract people especially to the church. And we would do that every year and then we have a a theme for that year. And uh, uh, I think one was called Open the Gate in in uh, Open the Gate in 'oh eight or something like that. And it would have the different, and we we would list the things that we were trying to accomplish. And then it would be communicated to the congregation and then we have to get our feet into the action to make sure those things were taking place. And so we did that every year and it was really thrilling to actually start the whole new year on a new platform to be able to say, what have we done last year? What 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 do we like? What do we do not like? And what do we want to do this year that's different and that will help our church and congregation to grow? And so there was that sense of 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 looking to what God is leading us to in the future. I think that we would see God at work if we would have fresh visions for what God would call us to do as a church at First United Methodist Church. I think it's true for all of you, but I think for First United Methodist Church as well. And so um, anybody have any thoughts on that?
About coming to church on Sunday morning, says, I know I gotta go to church.
Yes, well, you know, and I I I think you're right. I I think there is more enthusiasm in a certain sense because people are so excited to get back to church. But I think that that renewed enthusiasm in the church is so much better than coming to church and then falling asleep. You know, that's the reason Joyland, I see Joyland on Sunday morning uh so that she can look at me and make sure I'm not misbehaving, you know. Not falling asleep. I told the congregation one time that I don't mind if you sleep during the sermon, but whatever you do, don't smirk because it'll wake up the person next to you. So we need to really have enthusiasm. Yeah, I think of greater enthusiasm.
Rob, I agree with what Ma- Mark said and Romans eight twenty-eight is a good scripture about that, about God working all things for the good. He doesn't cause the evil, but He can work everything out for our good. If for those that are called according to His purpose.
Right, exactly. I mean, you think God has been absent during COVID? Do you think He just decided I'm off the throne? You guys are all on your own now. I don't think so. I think that God has been uh allowing this for a particular reason, for non-Christians and for Christians. And for our church and what that is, that's for somebody a lot wiser and discerning than me, I think. It takes a lot of people though to find that out and to figure that out, to think about and pray about. And I think that's exactly right. You're right, Eloise. So.
What, hey, can I say something?
Sure, Brenda.
This is Brenda. Um, it has also, the pandemic has shown people what they can live without that they didn't know they could live without, you know, people that were just sports addicts or going to, you know, concerts and restaurants, eating out three times a week, families going in five different directions and all of a sudden they have had time together and, you know, you you find out you don't have to be in five different clubs going every day of the week.
That's right.
Yeah.
So that's about getting, getting still.
Priorities.
Yeah.
We saved a lot of money by not going to restaurants and and now we're saving more money than we're talking about fasting, so we're doing pretty good. Personally, when Lent's over, you know, what's going to happen next year at Mardi Gras is going to be a blowout. There's going to be a blowout. I mean, there's going to be so many people at Mardi Gras. It's going to be incredible. People are going to go to restaurants. Our son is a chef at a restaurant, a a fine dining restaurant in Pittsburgh and he uh, you know, I mean, they're piling into the restaurants. It's incredible. I mean, they were closed for months, weren't they, Joyland? I think they were closed for about three months and then they closed again for three weeks, closed again for two weeks. And every time they keep opening up, people are just flying into the restaurant. So it really helps us to really see that that, you know, that there were things that we uh are are not missing all that much too, I guess. Well, I think that, you know, to sum up, the time is upon us, but to just say that, you know, I really think that pure and heart is really one of the most important functions of the Beatitudes because it teaches us about what the human problem is and the solution to that problem that God gives us. And then how we cooperate with that, 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 um, that, you know, that change to be able to see and have a vision. I want to close and remind you of that one verse that is so important. Um, now we can, this is from First Corinthians thirteen twelve. Um, now all we can see of God is like a cloudy picture in a mirror. Later we will see Him face to face, just like Fanny Crosby did. And there is a sense in which even though we don't see God fully right now, the time will come that you will see Him. It won't be in this life. It'll be in the future. Um, any other thoughts, questions, comments? Eleanor, do you want to close with prayer? Eloise, I'm starting. She there? Eloise?
Yeah, she's here. Hold on.
Father, we just thank you for this time to be quiet and listen to your word. Father, your word is what sets us free. It's what gives us courage, encourages us, gives us comfort and strength. Lord, we just thank you that you didn't leave us without a roadmap, but that you left us your word. And Father, we just thank you that um we have those that can teach us the word so that we can understand it. And we can can apply it to our life and to our heart and we can live it out in our daily life. We just thank you, Father, for the beauty of this time of year and for s- sparing us from the storm that was coming through here, Lord. We just thank you for your grace and your mercy that are extended every day. They're fresh and new every morning, Lord. We love you and we ask you to continue to protect us and guide us and keep us walking in your ways in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Y'all have a good evening and we'll see you same time, same station next week.